Board is not able under the Brown Act to engage in any level of conversation or discussion, but we look forward to this opportunity to gather community input. At this time, the board will devote up to fifteen minutes to review comment to the board of trustees regarding any subject not appearing as an agenda item for this meeting, but over which the board has jurisdiction. No action or discussion will occur at this time in such items. Each comment shall last longer than three minutes. We do have some. And no particular order. Joshua, would you like that?
Good evening. Uh, my name is Joshua Murillo. Um, Napa resident. I was raised in this valley. I've been an employee of Napa Valley College for over four years now. And what I'm going to say is probably going to make you uncomfortable. This college and this board has expressed many times that we need to become a more equitable institution. And whether you say it out loud or not, that entails confronting racism and the ideologies of white supremacy. Doing this creates a space that's welcoming to people of color. One that acknowledges their inherent worth as human beings, as well as the value and of the experience and knowledge that they bring. You might be thinking that's exactly what we're doing. But what's said and what's actually happening can be two different things. Over the past year, four of my colleagues of color have left this college. Approximately a year ago, Mendisa Wood, professor and program coordinator of ethnic studies, humanities, and philosophy, and the program coordinator of the cultural center abruptly resigned. About six months ago, Dr. Gail Roloda, counselor for disability support programs and services, and the instructor for learning community, Cassisian abruptly resigned. About three months ago, Stephanie Liu, disability support program programs and services specialist abruptly resigned. And this month, Luis Alcazar, dean overseeing HSI initiatives, STEM resources, and the Dream Center abruptly resigned. Mendisa and Stephanie had dedicated about a decade each to this college. Luis and Mendisa had reached what are typically considered high points in educational careers. One is a dean and the other is a tenured professor. Each of these individuals has directly expressed to me that it was the undeniably inequitable atmosphere of this college that led to their resignations. And were not for this atmosphere, they would still be here. Each one of these people brought in valuable experience and expertise to the college, and they were passionate about the work they did here in service of their students. And Disa took up the mantle of being the cultural center and organized inspiring talks through the center. Talks were often oftentimes on social justice and building inclusive communities. Gail completed a doctorate in education last year and was selected by the College of Education at San Francisco State University to represent her graduating class. Her dissertation was titled With Love Disrupting the Dehumanization of System, Justice System-Impacted Students in Community College System. Stephanie helped ensure students with DSPS within DSPS receive necessary accommodations each and every semester. Luis led Mesa STEM Center through the pandemic. And that center is now one of the most of the most active and welcoming places on campus. He brought in millions of dollars in HSI grants that helps student send students to STEM conferences and helps send faculty and staff to conferences to develop their professional skills. He also started an internship program that gives students at this college an opportunity to perform scientific research and present their findings in a poster symposium, something that most students don't get a chance to experience unless they're at a four-year institution. Each of these people were passionate about creating and maintaining a welcoming and inclusive environment for students and staff. Despite their passion and dedication, each one of these individuals faced continuous obstacles in simply doing their jobs. Their requests were regularly ignored or outright denied. Their suggestions were regularly discounted, and their expertise was regularly questioned. Confronting racism is no simple task, but as a wise man once said, not everything that is based can be changed, but nothing can be changed until it's face. These problems are structural, but they're also upheld by the actions of individuals. If you don't have any clue who these individuals are, you might just be wanting some. Thank you for your attention.
Joshua. Uh, I have two speakers. Looks like on the same topic, but I'm actually gonna have a Chad Snyder, Napa Sheriff's Activity League. For the evening.
Evening.
How's that? Uh, I came here as the this evening's representatives for the Sheriff's Activity League, representing both the Sheriff's Activity Judo Program and the Wrestling Program. I came here to say thank you for allowing us a place to train, practice, and learn for the past year and a half. Uh, my own story as a peace officer, a judo black belt, and now a coach who started with one single class at a junior college. A little background, Sal Wrestling has operated for the past twenty-three years and Sal Judo for the past nine years. Between the two programs, we have a hundred and thirty kids enrolled. We run over two hundred practices a year and provide approximately twelve thousand hours of training each year. Our competitors competitors have traveled to over eleven different states and have taken home titles and medals too numerous to mention. Some of our kids have gone to college on scholarships, but every one of these kids have benefited from the training. Sal Wrestling and Judo are completely free programs for youth, Napa youth ages five to seventeen. Do volunteers, grants, and generous donors, these programs are one of very few programs for finance that are never the issue for kids. Equipment, training, travel, turn, feeding, and food are provided for any kids that competes or trains. Over the years, Sal Judo has had five, uh, sorry, sorry, Sal Judo has had five homes, Sal Wrestling has had eight separate homes. Without a doubt, this has been our favorite place and I'll be sad to go. We're thankful for the time that you guys gave us. Black will even here forever with most probably displayed in law.
Thank you. Right, uh, next speaker, let's have Kendall Crane.
Good evening. My name is Kendall Crane. Um, I lived in Napa my whole life and I'm a graduate of Napa Valley College. My grandfather, Bill Crane, taught me the value in being an active participant in the community. So I'm here to speak about Room Thirty, Room Four Thirty no longer being offered for the Sal Judo and Wrestling Program. My father, Brad Crane, was world judo champion in nineteen eighty and brought honor to Napa. The Napa Register featured a proud article about him on October sixteenth in nineteen eighty. He was my judo instructor as a child. Having judo and other extracurricular activities available to me as a child taught me discipline, gifted me mental and physical strength, and kept me out of trouble by giving me a healthy way to occupy my time. Now I'm a mother. Um, in January, I learned of this wonderful program offered through the Napa Sheriff's League located here at Napa Valley College. This free program offers judo and wrestling classes to kids ages seven to seventeen weekday evenings. I speak to you on behalf of the parents of this program and parents of our community. I began bringing my two children, ages eight and ten, to this class, and on our first day, the instructor informed us that there was a chance that they would be losing the space. I was hopeful this wouldn't occur, but I'm sad to learn that it has been decided. The program will lose the space at the end of March. It doesn't sound like the administrators of the Sheriff's League have a secure idea of where they will go. These types of programs benefit the community as a whole, and it is disheartening to see that the Community College will no longer be supporting these youths. Every night we have come to class, we see between twenty and forty students. These are twenty to forty families that have been served by this program through this space. I understand that the college offered another space to this program weekday mornings and early afternoons. This demonstrates the disconnect and the lack of care um, for the from the um, from the Napa Valley College administration who have made these offers and decisions. How can school-aged children make use of this space and program while they're in school? How can a community college expect a community to serve it, to support it, if they do not support their community? I don't know if it's too late to reverse this decision, um, or if there is another solution to this problem. Um, but I appreciate your time in listening to me speak on it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Kendall. Uh, Kyle Wilkinson or Wilker Wilkinson, Wilkinson. Thank you.
I'm speaking on the same topic, so I forgive for the redundancy. Uh, my name is Kyle Wilkinson. I'm an employee of the college, former student, graduate, and lifelong Napa resident. I come to the board today to comment regarding the repurposing of Room Four Thirty, the former Criminal Justice Training Center room, uh, mat room, pardon me. As I recall, that room was funded and built from the measure and bond that was passed in two thousand and two. I understand that all community use of this room must cease by March thirty-first, as it may be repurposed. Unfortunately, I was not able to determine from college administration what new purpose this room will serve after that date. Currently, on Monday through Thursday nights from six-thirty to seven-thirty, the Sheriff's Department, through their Sheriff's Activity League or SAL program, uses that room to teach judo and wrestling classes for kids. The classes are completely free, which is an amazing gift for the community, particularly in these trying economic times. This iteration of the program has been around for about a decade, and this is the fourth space that they have used. At the end of March, they will have been in the room in Room Four Thirty for twenty-one months. Program has been struggling to find another suitable space now that Room Four Thirty will be unavailable. I understand that that the decision to repurpose the space is more than likely final. I am not here to plead for the decision to be changed. I am here to say that the sentiment regarding the college and the community is not very good. It hasn't been for quite some time now. This is reflected in the fact that the last bond that was proposed was not passed. The proposal for another bond is all but enough. I've heard it spoken about on campus. As a person who's lived in Napa for thirty-five years and intends to stay in Napa for the rest of my life, I cannot say that I know of a single person currently vote to pass any bond. Things like these judo and wrestling classes were a step in the right direction to improve the sentiment with the community. I wish I could tell my friends and family that the college is intending to offer the use of our spaces in off times for more community activities, such as the judo and wrestling classes. I wish I could tell them that the pool would be open to the public in the summer and classes are not being taught, staff by volunteer. I wish I could say that I know the college understands the community and our needs and that the college cares about us. Instead, I am here reading this statement to you in the hurt and hopes that my words will not fall on deaf ears. I am here hoping that when the next pond is proposed, I can tell the community about all the wonderful activities the college offers and how voting yes on a bond will benefit them far more than it costs in robbery genesis. In closing, I would ask you all to ponder Napa Valley College mission statement. Napa Valley College transforms lives. Whether your goal is to transfer, to pursue a career, to explore your interests, Napa Valley College provides excellent educational and professional opportunities that are student-centered, equity-focused, and community-oriented. Where community-oriented is specifically defined as foster a sense of belonging on campus while also building connections with our larger community. If anyone present or watching online would like to contact me regarding this matter, I can be reached at k wilkerson at napa valley dot du. That email address can also be found in the employee directory on the Napa Valley College website under Kyle Wilkerson. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kyle. Uh, the board appreciates all of your uh, comments, public comments, and we will look into this and just as I was listening to you guys, was thinking of other facilities in the community. So we'll look into it, but appreciate your comments. Uh, we're gonna move to the consent calendar now. This is item seven. Approval of the consent calendar, motion for approval. Do I have a second? I have a motion from trustee Dodd.
Second.
Have a second from trustee Deluna. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Consent calendar has been approved. Next is item eight. General information, discussion, action items. This is the accreditation follow-up report. Dr. Rodman, one all.
Good evening, board. Uh, I am pleased to present the two thousand and twenty-four follow-up report uh, to you for consideration and approval. Uh, we are compiled in the midst of compiling all of the evidence to embed into the final version of the report that will go to the ACCJC. Um, and that pro- as part of that process, we're engaged uh, um, making a few minor edits uh, to reflect either our current status or uh, the names of documents that have been cited in evidence. Uh, we've collected all of the signatures for the um, certification page with the exception of trustee Iverson, who will be the last to sign this certification page pending your approval. And uh, the report is due March first, but at this point in time, I expect to submit it prior to the deadline. That's it.
Any questions from the board? Good work and look forward to signing it. Um, I need a motion and a second. I have a motion by trustee Deluna. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by trustee Baker. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Motion carries. Trust me, Donald, that one. Uh, okay. Gonna move to item eleven, human resources, information, discussion, action items. This is academic personnel status document. Do we have um, motion to approve? I have a, I have a motion by trustee Dodd. Do I have a?
Second.
A second by trustee Baker. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you. Uh, next is the state budget update, twelve point one. Mister Jim Reeves.
This is a brief update on the state budget. Uh, I, I just want to let you know that my remarks initially uh, don't impact the college quite as much as it will impact other apportioned districts, so. So bear with me. Don't, don't fall over quite yet. The, the state budget is running, uh, was reported to be about thirty-seven billion dollars short and would have had an impact on all uh, state services. Um, the governor's January budget anticipated that um, better returns on, on their investments would yield a um, an improvement or a reduced um, demand on a reduced deficit. It is in fact not playing out that well. And in fact, uh, they're looking, uh, they're projecting now about a twenty-four billion dollar addition to that as we look in, in February, January, February toward the end of the year. All that said, uh, is that the Prop ninety-eight funding legislation that supports all public funding uh, will likely take some hits um, in the coming year. What that means to Napa Valley College is that um, uh, the COLA provided by the state in, in the January budget was point seven six of one percent, less than one percent. It's hard to know whether that will disappear or not. Uh, however, the impact on the college is, is that point seven six percent would be applied to several of our categorical programs. Not a big portion, uh, not a significant um, portion of our unrestricted general fund, but certainly may impact some of the programs that are funded with categorical funds. The outlook for uh, community-based institutions seems to be um, uh, neutral, if not slightly confident, because property taxes aren't impacted quite the way the state budget is. Um, I don't have a forecast from the county on what it looks like uh, for the coming year. Uh, um, you know that eighty-five plus percent of our budget is based on county, uh, excuse me, property tax revenues. Again, I don't think we're quite, we are not in the same position as apportioned districts. But we wanted, uh, we are certainly going to be budgeting conservatively, going certainly into the tentative budget until we have firmer information in August about what the real property taxes will be. Our, our methodology will be to take the previous two years' average of property tax revenue and use that as starting point for our tentative budget. Hmm. So that said, uh, we are fortunate, frankly, to be a community-based district at this point in time. And I'll certainly keep you updated as we move through the tentative budget process uh, and on to final budget. So that's my report about the state budget.
Thank you. Next, we're gonna move to item twelve point two. It's an action item, California Community College Chancellor's Office Quarterly Financial Status. This is the report for the period ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. And back to you, Mister Reeves.
Thank you, President Iverson. Uh, this is a report that goes quarterly to the chancellor's office. As I mentioned in the previous meeting, this looks very similar to the monthly reports you see. Um, so it, it appears to be a little redundant, but it's required to come before the board. Um, this is our, our, our second quarter finished as of December thirty-first. It, uh, the far right column reflects our budget as adopted by the Board of Trustees. So you'll see our revenues uh, uh, are consistent uh, with our budget and our, uh, and our bottom line percentage of uh, general fund balance. Uh, is it about thirteen and a half percent is which, which we reported to you and you adopted in, in terms of the budget. Moving down, uh, the schedule here, here, you look at cash and cash reserves. Um, these, we're looking at uh, total cash at this point of about twenty-two point three million dollars. That includes all cash on hand for all of our accounts. We want to be careful there. Some of that is for bond payment as well. Um, and then on to the unrestricted general fund revenues expense expenditures, it gives you in the far right column a percentage of our expenditures, revenue and expenditures at December thirty-first are, are technically six months halfway through our fiscal period. And you can see there that we're generally trending in, in the right direction relative to how much our revenues received, forty-nine point seven percent. I'm surprised at that, given our property tax uh, receipts and when they arrive, uh, but we are on track there. And our, and our expenditures are forty-seven point nine percent. Uh, uh, I, I don't, excuse me, line J one. And our total uh, unrestricted expenditures are, are sitting at around forty-six point two percent, so well below certainly for well below fifty percent at halfway through the year. Scroll down, Solange. And these are, we're, we're able to answer no to the questions that are, that um, uh, uh, that are any questions that are outstanding that chancellor's office wants to know about. We don't have any unsettled at that December thirty-first, and do not have any unsettled contracts during the period and no significant events uh, for the quarter. Um, uh, including any adult, uh, excuse me, audit findings. And that's, uh, that's in summary, the Q two report submitted to that will be submitted to the chancellor's office and requires uh, board acknowledgement.
We are, we're fine. Motion to approve the chancellor's quarterly financial status report.
Second.
Uh, motion by trustee Dodd and a second by trustee Reeves. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Motion carries unanimous. Um, next, uh, inform my information item twelve point three. This is twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four unrestricted general fund eleven. Operating fund revenues and expenditures budget update as of January thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Mister Reeves.
Thank you, President Iverson. Um, this is a report through uh, January thirty-first twenty twenty-four. Uh, seven months into our uh, fiscal year, you'll notice that we're at seven twelfths or fifty-eight percent. Uh, and that is uh, that's what's generally what we would want to look at in that far right column relative to expenditures. Since uh, the end of December, we've uh, uh, received a little, a bit more in revenue, so we're at sixty percent of budget real uh, in revenue in the far right column. Down to salaries, um, we are still trending a little light in full-time faculty salary expenditures and a little bit higher in part-time uh, faculty um, expenditures. It's not a particular concern because one off, uh, one, um, did you want to take a look, Rafael?
I'm just making sure you're looking at the right column.
Um, so we, so they offset one another, and I, I don't have any particular concerns there. Total uh, salaries are fifty-four percent. Um, so we're looking pretty good at this point in during the uh, schedule, during the uh, academic, excuse me, during the fiscal year. The employee benefits area is uh, is uh, is a uh, I have a bit of concern about, and that's the second line down, our contribution to public employees retirement system. We're trending at about sixty-nine percent. Certainly uh, above the fifty-five percent for the state retirement system and certainly above the uh, fifty-eight percent about where we are in, in the uh, in the, in the fiscal year. So I've asked our, our payroll folks to take a look at that and see what's going on, whether we have some invoice inconsistencies. Um, but that's an area we're taking a closer look at. But the more promising news, the total benefits is, is trending at fifty-seven percent at fifty-eight percent of the budget. However, if those continue to trend in the wrong direction, that, that number will be a negative variance, so we're keeping an eye on that. Computer books and supplies, uh, it's a small number. It's always that, that variance always jumps out at everyone. But it, it is a very small number and it's, it was related to a, a particular expenditure in our co- in our college police area. The um, the area that you raised last time, memberships, we're, we're trending, we seem to be trending in a variance uh, above our, our budget. We looked at a couple of areas. We have some uh, memberships in so, in, in about three areas that, that seem to be trending a little higher than last year. Um, so I need to verify why, why those are doing that, but we've identified three areas where our memberships um, our membership costs are higher than they have been in past years. That said, um, line forty-eight uh, is our total expenditures. Uh, uh, it are at fifty-six percent. So again, we're trending uh, okay, relative to budget. And if we can kind of lasso the uh, the retirement contributions to the ground, I think we'll be in, in better shape. I will share with you that we've had some unexpected expenses or certainly unplanned for expenses. Uh, we were we have an, we have an outstanding um, obligation or possible obligation relative to the reopener for the faculty uh, contract. That's an unknown at this point. I was going to wait and see what that was going to be, but I think I need to be moved forward and provide you information about uh, those additional expenses and how how we plan to address those in this budget. So you can look forward to that uh, at the March meeting. And that would conclude my report.
Any questions for Mister Reeves? Okay. Next, we're gonna move to item thirteen. This is board policy review and adoption. An action item, this is the second reading. Solange, can you pull those up for us?
Motion to approve.
The second, motion from trustee Dodd. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a second from trustee Baker. Oh, any questions or? No? Okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Motion carries. John Catherine, she's not here, but she's been working hard on those. All right, Jerry, are you ready? All right, uh, presentation, athletics update, Jerry Dunlap.
Get to sit down for this one. I thought it'd be easier just to, to show everybody, um. Allowing this. So uh, this first uh, resource we have is uh, it's called Huddle. Uh, it's an online uh, AI platform. So we have a uh, we now have a fixed uh, AI camera in the gymnasium. It's uh, not created by a human being. Uh, it tracks the basketball or the volleyball counting up the court. Um, and we also have a portable one that we use outdoors for soccer, and they're doing beta versions for uh, baseball and softball right now. So just, I'm not gonna bore you, but you know, you can, you just click on the button and then you know, we're into the Mendocino Women's Basketball Game a week ago during warmups and whatnot. Um, what we do is it tracks, it, it films every game. Um, we are required by the three C two A legislation to trade every game that we play in at a, as a home game. So now coaches don't need to upload. They literally just click a battle uh, button and it sends it over to the, to the previous college or whatever college we're playing. So that's saving our coaches, you know, sometimes they're staying up till one, two in the morning to trade film. They're doing it now within a second after the game. Um, this also allows us to live stream every home game. So you can go to YouTube, NBC Athletics, and watch all of our home games as well. Um, and it's great for our student athletes, uh, that you know, they can break down highlights, um, and send those off to colleges. We have a, a young lady that you can see here in the picture, uh, the Giles up top, uh, Cal State LA. Giles up top, Cal State LA, in the fall next year. So we're really excited about that. It does have recruiting aspects we can watch now, which means we use this also as a recruiting tool. So if we go to Pinot Valley, which is just south of us, we can go through their roster, their team, their videos. We're recruiting two of their young ladies right now, which is after giving the other night. So coach now goes to Bolton, going to huddle here and watch their game films. So that's been a great game changer. So we're also using it for recruiting. The second piece tonight is called Front Rush. We started to work, this is an outreach program. We're working hand in hand with River Trail Village to really try to get the word out about housing and to try to have students reach out to more students. So this is just one instance. We took men's soccer just to kind of show you what we did is we emailed approximately. Let me get to that one. Within a click of a button in regards to River Trail Village, over seventeen hundred and fifty eight athletes opened this up. And this was only in the state of California. We're trying to we first start with the state of California because we always attach the promise program into these emails. And we know within this email was open six thousand three hundred and seventy two times. And then we know they clicked links two hundred and sixty seven. So we're able to track that we Ashley Nap with River Trail Village has developed an actual link for us. When that's open, they know it's actually coming from a student athlete that we've been reaching out to. So it's been an impressive tool for us. As you, as we go through like duties, we know Coach Vili Ochoa, he had fifty three student athletes return a questionnaire back saying they are interested in Napa Valley College. We know that all fifty three are coming, but if we can get two or three or four percent of those in return, it's going to be invaluable. And and then with this, lots, most of our coaches. Actually, you can kind of get it. It's kind of scary. If you go to our new volleyball coach, you can kind of track this. Kind of scary too, because I can track what our coaches are doing. You can see here, he's been sending out emails to all these former or these potential students. He's having recruiting weekends. He's had free recruiting weekend volleyball players on campus. He had a girlfriend Canada was down a week ago. She has already submitted her application to the college and is just finishing up her international application. So he's run three of those weekends. Baseball is running multiple. Basketball is starting Saturday events as well. And so we want to thank Jim again and Daniel for helping provide this to us because we're really starting to see uptick in interest in Napa Valley College, not just from the state of California, where we are able to reach out. And it is legal now for us to reach out to every state and throughout the world. So we did have a gentleman from Japan, we believe. We may be having two baseball players from Japan next fall, and he actually came to campus to make sure it was an actual campus. And so he did like the campus, they like the program we're offering them. So that's another condo we may have with Japan to send athletes this way. So thank you for your time. If there's any questions. I don't want to bore you too much on this because I kind of geek out about this school.
Any questions or?
I could get you.
It's on, it's on, it's on the athletics website.
It's usually just dedicated to the coaches. Now each student athlete does have a hub during a huddle account. So they can go in and watch them, they can break film down and whatnot. But you can go to YouTube TV and they're all over games right in there right now. Or YouTube, YouTube.
Well, thank you, Jerry.
Not not boring at all.
Well, I, you know, athletics is noise for everybody. It's fun. It's for the student athletes like it. It's been a great tool for us. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move to reports. This is item fifteen. Procedure guidelines for reports. I'm gonna start with associated students in Napa Valley College report. Priya Sharma, is she here or virtual? Solange, Julie, we don't have anyone. Next, classified Senate report, Danielle Alexander. I don't see her.
Hello, can you hear me? Can you hear me? This is Danielle.
Barely.
Barely? Are you, can you hear me now if I shout?
So it's a little better, but we can put our ears.
Danielle, it's not you. It's us.
Okay. I have a, I have a short report, so but I'll try to really enunciate and speak loudly. I just wanted to really touch base about how how wonderful I feel like shared governance is going for all of our groups on campus right now. You know, the focus of the Senate, of course, is to participate in shared governance and as a whole, I feel really inspired by the efforts of many in regard to this. We've seen an increase in classified senators participating in district committee work and bringing reports back to general senate meetings. We have really built a stronger communication over the past many months. And I think all of this is really improving the overall understanding of what's going on at school among all of us. So there aren't as many like questions and just question marks, like what is accreditation? I think people know now. What is an ed master plan? I think people know now. You know, it's just feeling really cohesive and good. And I wanted to just touch base on that and say thank you to everybody who's, you know, making that happen. And really express our gratitude for the, you know, the welcome of our information and our wisdom and just building community. It's feeling really great. And that is the end of my report. It's really good to see you. I'm sorry I couldn't be there in person.
Thank you, Danielle. Have a good evening. Next is classified association report, Josenia Koda.
Hi, good evening. Welcome to hear me. Yes. In my report today, I would like to use this space to uplift our colleagues listed in the HR document, item eight point three, classified employee separations. I would like to uplift Karen Smith, who dedicated herself to Napa Valley College for twenty two plus years. I would like to uplift Evangeline Banji Fair, who dedicated herself to Napa Valley College for twenty three plus years. I would like to uplift Joe Acevedo, who dedicated himself to Napa Valley College for thirteen plus years. And I would like to uplift Elizabeth Anderson, who dedicated herself two plus years. Lastly, but certainly not least, I would like to uplift Dean Luis Alcacer, who was and will always be considered ally, mentor, educator and friend. We wish them all the best and thank you all for this space. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Josenia. Next is fifteen point five administrative confidential Senate report, Christine Tapia. She with us?
Hi, can you?
Hi, Christine.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Good evening, Board, members of Cabinet and the campus community. I have a really short report and I apologize that I couldn't join you in person tonight as well. I wanted to start off by saying that in the spirit of Black History Month, I would like to invite all of you to a lecture and presentation next Thursday. That's February twenty second, five thirty PM in the Little Theater. The presentation is called Drumming Up Resistance, Afro-Brazilian Sacred Music and Power, and will be performed by Dr. Univon, who is an esteemed scholar, anthropologist and professor of humanities and communications at CSU Monterey Bay. And I would also like to acknowledge and give special thanks to Dr. Patricia Munsami for coordinating this powerful event. And in addition to bringing valuable events like this to enhance the culture and belonging at NBC, Dr. Munsami is also leading a monthly DEI discussion with members of the Administrative Confidential Group. This idea really came from the members who wish to extend their DEI learning after completing a four part training in January. So we beginner extended DEI learning next week. We will do them monthly and hope to be able to extend the opportunity across campus in the future. And in other critical activities, the follow up report that you just approved on tonight's agenda, I want to especially commend Dr. Robin Warnall and her very small but mighty office for the Herculean effort to put all of that together. And also speak to the amazing work that is documented in that report and that we evidently can accomplish by collaborating across groups or taking leadership roles in matters of policy, resource planning, and most especially, as my colleague Danielle Alexander pointed out, shared governance, just to name a few. So I think that these are achievements that we should be proud of. We can lift up and should lift up in this institution. So that concludes my report. Hope to see you in person next month.
Thank you, Christine. Next up is fifteen point six academic Senate report, Matthew Kronzer.
Nice to see you all in person. My first time attending in person. Does microphone off? Okay, I'll believe you. So thank you. It's nice to be here. I do want to recognize Christine and Danielle. They've spoken to many of the points I plan to share today. I think we've made progress in the areas of shared governance. Many of the things that they've highlighted and uplifted, I was also going to recognize in my report. I'm happy and quite relieved to report that the Academic Senate has endorsed the follow up report for our accreditation process. And I also was going to acknowledge Dr. Robin Warnall for the work that she did on that as the ALO. I'd like to also update and report to the board that we are continuing to finalize the policies that we got in the fall twenty twenty three to twenty twenty four cycle. We are close to finalizing many of the legal updates that we have there, and you'll be seeing some of those board policies coming here. And I'm also happy to report that we have recently signed into mutual agreement, updated version of AP twenty five ten, which means you are one step closer to hopefully repealing D eleven forty, which I believe has been on the books for somewhere about two decades. And it'll be nice to see that off the books and one step closer to having a current reflective policy in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Eighteen point seven faculty association report.
Always like the lead balloon at the end. Good evening, Board, and Happy New Year. This is the first time I've seen most of you since the last year ended. As as Mr. Reeves pointed out, negotiations are ongoing, as they always seem to be. I did want to point out that last month I attended a statewide CTA conference. It's a big winner conference of the year. We only have three per year. In that conference, the subject of the fifty percent law came up. I'm sure this isn't news to you, but just in case it is. Unless we think no one across the state is paying attention to what's happening at Napa Valley College. Unless we think we have no statewide recognition at all, we in fact do. And Napa Valley College singled out at that conference as one of the only two colleges in the state to be in violation of the fifty percent law. In fact, the speaker wanted me to know that we are the most in violation of any college in the state of the fifty percent law. At forty five point twenty eight percent, Napa Valley College is six percent below the state, over six percent below the state average. At which point, when they mentioned this in the slide and had it up there for everyone to see, all eyes in the room of one hundred and eighty nine state representatives turned to me. And people asked me, what is happening at Napa? I don't know. What is happening at Napa? We're still ranked sixty fourth in salaries over seventy two community college districts. We're still the only community college within a fifty mile radius that forces faculty to pay for healthcare services for their families out of their own pockets. And that is clearly affecting our retention, our hiring and retention of faculty. I really hope that in this next negotiation cycle, we can fix some of these issues. And I'm of course always willing to work with you to fix those issues. And that is my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Christie. Next is president and board reports.
Solange, would you mind opening the OAA board report, please? Thank you so much. There are three main items that I wanted to report on tonight. The first I've mentioned before, but this is the first semester that we are actually live as a home college member institution of the California Virtual Campus. And so just there's a link there if you would like more information about what this is. There are lots of positive impacts for students. We have one hundred and fifteen other colleges in our system, most of whom are members of the virtual campus. And there may be classes, for example, if we only offer them once a year or once every two years and a student is coming in in a different cycle than when we offer them. If that is being offered at another campus, they can register and enroll as if they were taking it from us. They don't have to fill out a separate application. It is very streamlined. Their transcript comes to us when they complete the course and it becomes part of their transcript here. So it makes it very smooth and seamless for them to be able to take courses at other institutions if needed. That allows them to complete their degrees in a more timely manner, if that would be an issue otherwise. We have two students who are inaugural users of the home college experience. And one of them is taking Python programming. We do not have Python here, so it provides them with a course they wouldn't be able to take otherwise. And the second is taking a global studies class called Ethnic and Race Relations, US and Global Perspectives. Those students are taking the majority of their classes here. For financial aid purposes, they need to have at least six units with us and they can take any remaining classes with other institutions and still receive their full financial aid award. So this is really a student centered activity. The next step, various committees and groups are looking at the possibility of us becoming a teaching college. So a home college means that they can go out and take other online courses in our system. If we become a teaching college, that means that students from the other hundred and fifteen colleges could take courses with us if they can't get them at their home institution. So that is something that we're exploring. So it's very exciting. Spring twenty twenty four is the first semester we are part of the California Virtual Campus. The second thing I wanted to highlight is one of the items on their consent agenda was seven point eight. This is a new internship opportunity for students who want to pursue a career in an energy related field. And most likely, the student or students who participate will be from the earth sciences, environmental science or geology. And it is a paid internship, which is a wonderful opportunity. The period is twenty dollars per hour. One of our faculty members, Carrie Roughly, will be providing the supervision. The payment comes from the sponsoring organization, which is a nonprofit. So it's a, it's a great example about how students have opportunities for internships that will help prepare their work as they are taking their coursework as well. And then the last item I wanted to highlight is where we are with your educational master plan. Our student team has been needing regularly to give input at every stage of the process. And I just wanted to point out some of the highlights we're seeing thematically in this process and then a few of the goals that are coming out. So the student surveys were completed in the fall semester, and I've mentioned that previously. But I really wanted to highlight what students are saying about our faculty and staff. And this is a really powerful set of numbers. We had five hundred and thirty two students responded to the survey, which is actually quite good. Our consultants have indicated that other institutions, they have developed plans for that they would get more commonly like two hundred or so. So we had a good turnout. Among the student respondents, ninety seven percent say they would recommend Napa Valley College to others. And they also, in the comments, the open ended comments, there were many very, very positive remarks about their experiences with faculty and staff on the campus and their learning experience. So our students are telling us that they are really benefiting from what we're So our students um are telling us that they are really benefiting from what we're offering. Out of the various activities that we've done around the E M P, we're starting to develop some draft goals. And I, this is not inclusive by any means, but I am mentioning some that have been um stronger points that have been emphasized and seem to be coalescing around these goals. So the, uh, you see highlighted your five, improve alignment between course offerings and enrollment. Improve data correction for dual enrollment students with a focus on equity and access. That's something um that will be very important for us to understanding what populations we are serving with our dual enrollment programs. Also increasing the number of students who transfer to a four-year institution, the number who attain living wage employment once they leave M V C. And the E M P has really interesting data about which careers are really um aligned with that living wage attainment. So it's not just get a job by get a job that can support you and your family. Um, and then another theme that has come out and one of the goals identified is to create additional spaces on campus for students to gather before and after class. So people want to have um areas for community building as they learn and study here. And just as a reminder, uh, the completion schedule that we have is that February twenty-seventh, a draft um narrative will be shared with the extended cabinet for um some additional feedback. And then during the month of March, um, the E M P draft will be shared with our various disciplinary governance groups for uh, any input that they may have with the um intent to bring the draft E M P to the board in April and then for a second reading and hopefully support in May. So we're very excited about what we're seeing and the really helpful um ideas that are coming from all of our groups. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Maria.
All right. Good evening, board. Can pull up, yeah, that's the one right there. Well, my report. Um, and community, uh, when I wish everybody a um beautiful month as we start the new semester, also recognizing we are Black History Month, so want to thank all of our community members for contribution. Um, wanted to start off today by just highlighting a couple of things we've been doing in in student affairs, specifically about outreach and and campus tours. On February first, the staff of uh E O P S, uh, next up Mesa in our H S I initiative led a campus tour for about thirty-nine students, tenth and eleventh graders from Live Oak High School out of Live Oak. Um, this group had just visited Stonestreet University and um wanted to come by and and visit Napa Valley College before heading, heading back. So we were able to facilitate that. It was actually pretty quick kind of turnaround. We got the um the ask, uh, week and a half or so early, so staff really came together before, came together and and put together a pretty powerful presentation for them. They, uh, students came in and learned about the college, um, also had a student panel uh led by Mesa students. And uh, I got to participate just as a observer. Very powerful. Um, I want to thank our student leaders, Steve, Victoria and Giselle for leading that space. Um, and just uh they got to do a uh visit of our campus, walked around and saw various departments, various programs engaged with uh with our campus. So it was, it was a pretty powerful day um for for this, this group. Um, and I want to thank everybody who put that together and and uh and did a powerful activity for for our students. Um, the Office of Student Life, we've been busy the first week of school, January seventeenth and eighteenth, various student fair programs and services as coordinated by Office Student Life had um welcome, welcome back week and welcome week. And this is an activity that we typically um will present our services to the, to the students, um, also some clubs. Um, and students can come by, learn about our, uh, all of our different programs that we have on campus. It's an opportunity for our student affairs programs to also um do recruitment. So that happened on the seventeenth and eighteenth, followed by February sixth, uh, club rush. So this was in Student Activity Center. Um, various clubs and also student affairs departments uh came together to to share information about our program. About seventy-five students participated in that event. So really, the Office of Student Life is moving, trying to reengage the community around activities on campus and and they're doing a good job of it. So from various activities that we have throughout the semester. Want to highlight the work of the Mesa STEM areas. Um, as part of the Mesa, as part of the Mesa and Dreamers of Community Change Pre-Med Club, fifteen students along with staff members Renee Rubio attended a conference in Stanford University at Stanford on February third. So um, pretty powerful activity for them to to be there, um, pre-med activities, um, and experience that campus. Um, also want to highlight nine NBC Mesa students were awarded the Dwight David Eisenhower Transportation Fellowship Program um in the amount of five thousand dollars each. This fellowship is an opportunity for students who who are pursuing degrees in transportation-related disciplines. Um, also, more information there, because the, the program is really about advancing transportation workforce by helping to attract the nation's brightest minds to do transportation. But I want to just specifically say or speak about this on between January sixth and and the eleventh. These students plus um our staff member Patricia Plasada, counselor, traveled to Washington, D C to to participate in a transportation board, um, just training research board conference. So um, our NBC students got to showcase their, their work there uh at that conference. So a pretty powerful activity for them. I want to invite you to Breakfast with Engineers happening on February seventeenth. This is open to all community members. Will be happening in our Student Activity Center. Um, it's an opportunity for our community members, students to engage with experts in the field to learn about engineering um, um fields. Um, and finally, I want to uh highlight the work of Moja. Um, and uh, this year, our Moja, um, our learning community focused on African-American experience participated in the seventh uh seventh annual Black History Celebration on February third at Crosswalk Community Church in Napa. Amazing uh activity. Congratulations, Dr. Tia Madison, the Moja students, Trustee Olson, also Dr. Munsami, who are here, but she was uh a huge part of that. The entire community uh committee that organized a powerful and valuable activity for um the community. So basically, our Moja students led by Dr. Tia were on a panel and for the community and it was really engaging and powerful moment for, I think, students and for for the community. Um, on February thirteenth, just uh, the day, we, um, Dr. Paul and I got to participate in the Moja Board Talk. So this is an activity basically where we, um, the Moja community will will provide information and or some stuff, quick talk on on um different topics. And for this specific topic, it was for African influential black women. So powerful presentation talk that we got to listen to and engage with. I want to invite you all to the next Board Talks, which will be happening on February twentieth, twenty-seventh, and then eighth, sixty-three, um, twelve-thirty to one-twenty. And one more activity that I want to bring your attention to, it happened tonight, right across the way, is uh Moja's Paint Night. So if you want to engage in some painting with an artist, uh, after the meeting here, you can go right across the way and the Moja is doing active, there's this activity tonight. So in the community. So this concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. G.
All right. I will uh provide a brief report. We just uh went over the uh twenty-three, twenty-four budget. A moment with institutional technology. We are uh moving forward with that that old topic, M F A, multi-factor authentication. Um, uh, we are under the gun, if you will, to get that done, to provide additional security to our systems and meet statutory requirements. So we anticipate we will be completed with that for uh faculty, staff and students into uh into April. Um, secondly, I, I want to indicate that we are moving, we're uh beginning the process of developing uh a uh a technology master plan for the institution. Uh, it is, it will, it will sit in the District Technology Committee with invitations to several across the campus to participate in that. It's in, it's in very nascent stages now, but uh we'll see more activity uh in a long overdue plan uh to provide some, some semblance of order and predictability about what our I T needs are. And and just as importantly, being able to um look forward to see what kind of financial demands uh are required to meet those uh meet those needs to support students' teaching and and learning. Can you scroll down, Solange? Thank you. Student housing update. Um, I, I know this is, this is, needs to be and and will be a regular report uh to you. Uh, as of uh Monday, our, our, uh, we have two hundred and twenty-eight applications in progress and three hundred and thirteen inquiries, and those inquiries are being developed and and uh and moved to applications. Our license agreement is just right, uh, just ready to be approved. It's uh, it's been difficult to get two attorneys to talk. Uh, no, no attorneys in our board, obviously, but getting two attorneys together to uh agree on what the language needs to be has been a little bit of a challenge, but I think we're just about there. The Wine Education Center, uh, you probably have heard, um, and uh I won't steal um Trustee Rios's thunder on, on that. Go ahead. Uh, thanks. Uh, we're looking for groundbreaking uh for that uh long overdue project and later this spring. So uh, Trustee Rios will have more information about that in a later date. Uh, I, I wanted to insert some information about what our enterprise and auxiliary services are doing, D A S. Um, they, they are involved in lots of activities that are directly related to the community and supporting the institution. Uh, uh, one example is our C P R growth. Our C P R program is growing, as you can see. Uh, pre-pandemic and then post-pandemic, and so we're doing a good work in terms of outreach uh uh in that program. Finally, in facilities, uh, scroll down. There we go. Facilities, uh, um, we, we have a new director, I think, uh, um, uh, Mr. Miguel Vargas has joined us in early January and uh and making progress in, in uh, in working on our total cost of ownership plan. The Ash Landfill in, in closing is, is um is in its final stages. I think I've been saying that for about six months, actually. It's final stages with the county. Um, but we anticipate be, being able to move uh move forward on any mitigation efforts there and be uh be in a, in a good place prior to opening our, our student residential program uh in August. So that would conclude my report.
Thank you, Mr. Reeves. And that concludes President's reports. Do you? All right. Bring along. And I move to sixteen point two. These are standing committee and other appointment reports. Uh, Trustee Olson is not here. Anything to add? Trustee Rios, V W T. You. Uh, Audit and Finance Committee, thank you guys, Matt. Um, Fierce and Best English Teaching Award. I think on that, yeah, right? Trustee Kishnet.
Uh, actually, we met yesterday and said a, a initial meeting. We'll be meeting uh beginning of March to go with it. We're just starting.
What is an exciting one? Uh, Dr. Ed Schenk Award. And yet. And then Napa Valley College Foundation.
I think the major update has been the, the Wine Education Center, which was already eloquently covered.
Okay, next is a trustee and board chair reports. We'll start with our student trustee. Nothing's very important. Trustee Kishnet.
I have got to report this evening.
Trustee Deleroy.
So I am just real quick. I, I've attended a few community meetings and um, it's nice to hear from the community how much they want to be on the campus and I really take advantage of the Valley campus and also here um in Napa. And also, um, I think we need to, um, now, I think the rules have changed for our student trustee, so we should probably look into that about, um, uh, voting procedures and stuff. So maybe we should look at that. So I'll, I'll bring, I'll, I'll look into it. Um, I know we had it on the agenda this last year, but it was supposed to go into effect January twenty-four. Um, and I just remembered when you were here, so I'm sorry that I didn't think of that before. Um.
All right. Thank you. Trustee Rios. Don.
Um, I just want to say something just to thanks our, to our budget services and our, or, excuse me, our budget committee and administrative services team. I mean, uh, over the past, you know, four years since I've been on the board, we've made tremendous strides in terms of getting into compliance with the fifty percent law. Um, which I don't think is, is uh recognized um very much and um, also background circumstantive of a, of a nineteen sixty-one law itself and how antiquated it is and hasn't changed since nineteen sixty-one and doesn't account for really everything that a, a modern-day community college needs to do to uh meet uh beyond twenty-first century goals of, of, of a student succeeding um in, in higher education. So I, I do, um, while we, I know we're making, I want to congratulate on that, but I also uh certainly want to recognize, I think, the underlying circumstances of, of the fifty percent law being a little antiquated is what I'll, I'll, I'll call it.
Thank you, Trustee Don. Uh, and I have nothing to report on. So I don't think anyone else has anything to add, but appreciate all the reports this evening and we're moving in the right direction. So with that said, there's no reason to go, go back to closed session. So we're gonna announce our future meeting, which will be March twenty-first, twenty twenty-four. And with that, we will adjourn at six forty.